It's not that bad.
The board had been asking for one.
I'd like to call this special meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Des, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chatterley.
That's it.
Commissioner Schuster. Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Honeyfield's out in the parking lot.
I believe so.
He is. Do you want me to get him?
If you would mind.
Thank you.
While we're doing that, would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to thank everybody for showing up this evening.
Excuse me if they wanted to give me a ride.
Had you declined?
Oh, I told them I wasn't sick.
Couple of announcements. I actually only won our next regular commission meeting, we Tuesday, August 27th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. This time, we will take items from citizens present. However, if it's regarding anything on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up. And we do not discuss personnel issues in these meetings.
Oh, I was looking for a microphone to adjust. Okay.
Just state your name for us, please.
Thank you, mayor and commission members. I'm Reverend Jill Klein with Holy Trinity Episcopal Church and the Treasurer for RAIN, the Regional Agency Intervention Network.
Hi, I'm Danielle Vanderpoel in support of recovery and remembrance. I am here tonight with program Support to RAIN.
So, and we're here to say thank you for approving us at your special meeting two weeks ago that we somehow didn't realize we had been put on that agenda. We thought we were on tomorrow night's agenda. And we wanted to come tonight just to tell you a little bit about what you approved because it's more than just a one-day thing. So as I said, I'm the Treasurer for RAIN, which is the Regional Agency Intervention Network. And we have received the grant, RAIN has received the grant for the last three years in a row from recovery communities of New Mexico to do this particular event. During the month of September, there are 24 communities throughout the state who have received grants anywhere from $1,000 to $3,000 to recognize recovery and remembrance throughout the state of New Mexico. And it's a big deal throughout the state. This is the third year that RAIN has been the recipient of the grant. The first year that we did it, we had about 40 people come to Ripley Park and celebrate recovery. Last year, when we did it, we had about 75 people come. And that year, we were able to provide food for everybody and T-shirts to everybody who came. And we had several agencies participate with booths. And this year, we're hoping to have at least 150 people come. And that's part of why we asked for you guys to allow us to go on First Street. Danielle's going to tell you a little bit about the agencies and the community participating.
Thank you all. Yes, so many great agencies have been coming together at our subcommittee meetings and all volunteering their time to support this event. We are working with Crossroads, Rio Grande ATP, Team Builders, also Pennwell. So every mental health, behavioral health agency sees how important this is. And just to share a little bit on behalf of Lisa Chavez, she works for Rio Grande ATP. And they have been 46 years now of having a total of three locations in Raton, in Taos, and also in Las Vegas, New Mexico. They opened in 2022. Here in Raton, they are currently serving 150 local clients with substance abuse treatment services such as individual and group drug counseling, case management support, relapse prevention, and aftercare. So they are highly involved in their alcohol and substance abuse counseling. And we're so appreciative of all the professionals that are coming together that really care about our community to make this event possible.
We want to make sure everybody knows that recovery is not just about alcoholism or addiction. It's about mental health issues, suicidal ideations, the family members that live with it. In my family, we have over 60 years combined recovery between various members in the family. And we're really, really truly grateful for that. And also, there's a multitude of ways to get to recovery. It might be through a 12-step program. It might be through a faith-based organization. It might be because somebody was incarcerated and then was released and is carrying their message in the community. And it could be from other institutional means, clinical help. And so as we look at the recovery and remembrance, we have ended the last two years and we will do again a remembrance of those we have lost to addiction, alcoholism, suicide, overdoses. So we'll have boards up where people can bring pictures. We have all of the thoughts and memories from last year. And we'll end with basically a ceremony, a prayer service, and a litany. And we will be looking for speakers. And we'd like to invite our mayor or anybody from the council to be able to be part of the speakers that day. We're hoping to have at least seven speakers from different aspects of recovery to share, our theme is every family has a story. And we all know they do. And we'd like to invite people to share their story, not only from the family perspective and the personal perspective, at the level that they're comfortable with and the means that they found recovery, but from the professional perspective. Maybe we need to go talk to the ambulance folks out in the parking lot to see what they have to share about how they've responded to this kind of unfortunate crisis our whole world is, our whole country is living with right now.
Yes, and it will be a family-friendly, I said that so funny, a friendly family event. And we are going to have a lot of activities for the youth and also for the children. And we're just so excited to be able to come together for this event. There will be food trucks, there will be booths. We have reached out to legislators. There are a lot of great individuals from local Collaborative Eight working on bringing more volunteers to support it.
Local Collaborative Eight serves Union, Colfax, and Taos County. I should know that. Union, Colfax, and Taos County. And it's one of, I think, 12 throughout the state where counties collaborate on mental health response. I know during Citizens, you can't ask any questions. But Desiree, nice to meet you, has our contact information if you have any questions or follow-up, or if anyone would like to be part of our speaker list that day.
Sure, remind me of the date again?
September 21st. The event will run from 11:00 to 3:00 with setup for booths and vendors at 10:00. We are expecting to be able to give food tickets and T-shirts to the first 150 people that register when they show up that day. And we have received grants not only from recovery communities of New Mexico, but from the local, the LC Eight. Who was it that, Dr. Conder? We have one recently for $1,000. We have about, right now, $4,750 that we've raised in grants and sponsorships at this point. For those who might be interested in sponsoring the event, we'll put sponsorship forms up on the RAIN website, which is colfaxrain.org, where we're sponsoring for the event. Sponsorship is $100 and it gets your logo on a T-shirt and on all the flyers that go out as supporting the concept of recovery in our community.
Any questions there?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and I'll be in touch about possibly speaking.
Very good, thank you so much. And again, we apologize for not making it the night you actually voted yes for us. We just missed the messaging somehow, but that's okay. And we know that we need to get you the certificate of insurance, so that's coming too.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time. All right, moving on. Item 6A, deliberate act on approval of July 29, 24 special meeting minutes. Minutes have been presented to you all. There are no additions, corrections, deletions. I approve that they stand approved as presented.
Good to me.
Good to everybody. Minutes stand approved as presented. Item B, discussion, deliberate act on proposed dates and time for a city commission planning session. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, as discussed amongst members, we are overdue for a city commission planning meeting. The purpose of this working session is to align the goals and priorities of the elected officials with the strategic planning of the city administration. The suggestion was made that this meeting should be held during the day on an alternate Tuesday from a commission meeting and that they should be scheduled quarterly. The following Tuesdays are available this quarter, August 20th, September 3rd, September 17th. In looking at our calendar, we recommend September 3rd at either 9:00 or 3:00 PM.
Oh, no, I'm still going to be here, yeah. Well, that works for me. Does it work for you guys?
I can do the 3rd. Either, I think either time. 3:00 is probably better?
Okay, yeah, 3:00 is better, yeah. Yeah, I can do the 3rd. I'm going to do it for. Okay. Sounds like a date. So we'll go with September 3rd at 3:00 PM. Okay.
Are you going to make a motion?
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay.
It's just setting a date is all we're doing.
So, okay.
Now you got me thinking, Desiree.
I'll make a, I'll make a.
Let's just go ahead and do it, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve September 3rd at 3:00 PM for a commission work session.
Motion of second to approve September 3rd, 3:00 PM as our work session. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Des.
Thank you, sir.
Item C, deliberate act on event forums. We can take these one at a time. I'll read them and then we'll take them one at a time. First Baptist Church Community Block Party, August 21st. Gate City Music Festival, August 31st through September 1st. And the Oasis USA Awareness Ride, September 6th. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we have the event forums for your consideration. The first is a block party sponsored by the First Baptist Church for August 24th at 206 South Third Street from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. The map and certificate of insurance are in your packet. I recommend approval.
Anyone here from that event wants to speak? I think we were here last year.
Are we going to take them separately?
I thought that's. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll take them separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the First Baptist Church Community Block Party, August 21st, event forum.
Motion of second to approve the event for the Baptist Church on August 21st. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Gate City Music Fest, Mr. Mestes.
The second request is for the Gate City Music Festival on August 31st and September 1st on First Street. The event will begin at 9:00 AM on the 29th of August for set and conclude on the 2nd of September at 11:00 AM for teardown. The map and certificate of insurance are in your packet. I recommend approval.
Chris, you have anything you want to add, or?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, City Manager. Just to, you know, you've gone over the scope of the event. We're excited to be presenting it again this year. If there's any questions, I'm here for to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Valentini?
I'll make a motion to approve the Gate City Music Festival event forum.
Motion of second to approve the event, Gate City Music Fest. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next up, the Oasis USA Awareness Ride, September 6th. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the final request is for Oasis USA for a human trafficking awareness program on September 6th from 8:00 to 10:30 at the Tourist Information Center. Like Run for the Wall, this is a motorcycle event that will take the participants north through town on Second Street and depart on the North Raton exit. The map is in your packet and they are in the process of obtaining their certificate of insurance. I recommend approval pending receipt of insurance certificate.
Tiffany is on the phone if you have any questions about it.
Any comments, questions?
I'm just curious if the, which route would be the route that they're going to use there? The primary, and then there were two alternates, if that had been decided upon?
All I know is I believe the primary is going to be used. If you want to go straight up Second Street. Any other questions, comments?
I will make a motion to approve the event forum for Oasis USA Awareness Ride, September 6th, pending the insurance.
Motion of second to approve the event, Oasis USA Awareness Ride. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, deliberate act on public celebration permits for Gate City Music Festival, August 31st through September 1st. We have two, Colfax Ale Cellar and Left Turn Distilling. We'll just do these together. Any, Mr. Mestes, any information there?
We have two public celebration permits on the agenda. The first two are from Colfax Ale and Cellar. The first is for the Community Fiesta at the 100th Block of South First Street for two days on the 31st and September 1st. And the second is for the Schiller Theater on September 1st. I recommend approval for this one. And the second one is for Left Turn Distilling. And this request is for two days, August 31st and September 1st down on First Street.
This is all in conjunction with Gate City?
Yes.
It looked to me like they had all the paperwork with appropriate. So I will make a motion to approve the public celebration permits for the Gate City Music Festival, August 31st through September 1st, for the two for Colfax Ale Cellar and the one for Left Turn Distilling.
Motion of second to approve the two permits, celebration permits. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate act on Resolution 2024-48, authorizing acceptance and execution of the firefighter recruitment grant agreement with Department of Finance and Administration. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the City of Raton has been awarded $393,750 in firefighter recruitment grant funds allocated for a three-year period. The funds will be used to hire full-time firefighters and emergency medical technicians and will offset these costs. Like the police grant that we received a few years ago, the funds will be dispersed by the city at a rate of 100% for the first year, 50% for the second, and 25% for the third. I recommend approval.
Any comments, questions?
I thought it looked like a good program. It looks like there's some specific parameters for that, but it'll be very helpful. I will make a motion to approve the, or adopt Resolution 2024-48, authorizing acceptance and execution of the firefighter recruitment grant agreement with the Department of Finance and Administration.
Motion of second to adopt Resolution 2024-48. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate act on dispatch agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, Colfax County desires to use the City of Raton Dispatch Services for the Colfax County Sheriff, Fire, and Emergency Services Department. Colfax County is to pay the sum of $75,000 per year for 24 hours a day service. This is an ongoing agreement and I recommend approval.
Yeah, this is that time of year when we always do this kind of thing. Any comments, questions?
I want to approve the dispatch agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton.
Motion of second to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate act on award of quote for storm drainage and dangerous premises located at 220 South First Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the City of Raton solicited and received three sealed price quotations for contractor services for the construction of a storm drainage system on a dangerous premise located at 220 South First Street. The tabulation of the quotes received listed in alphabetical order are Archuleta Construction, base quote of $9,425, including GRT, $10,203.34. Desert Vaughn Limited Liability Corporation, $9,400 with an included GRT of $10,176.28. And finally, Gonzalez Contractors Limited Liability Corporation, base quote of $9,000 with including GRT, $9,743.25. The building is located adjacent to the Coors Building, owned by the City of Raton, and work will consist of construction of a storm drainage system to collect and divert stormwater to the alley while conserving emergency egress from the building. The storm drainage system consists of two 26-inch sections, six-inch gutter, one of which requiring new fascia and flashing and approximately 60 feet of six-inch SCH pipe to divert water to the alley. The City of Raton recommends award to the vendor providing the lowest quote, which is Gonzalez Contractors Limited Liability Corporation in the amount of $9,743.23, including New Mexico GRT. And on the second to the last page, you could see pictures of the area that is going to be addressed.
Any questions, comments?
Do we, are we, do we own the dangerous premise now at 220 South First?
We do not.
We do not. And we are.
This will be a lien on the building once we're done.
Okay.
Jaden Welch, City Engineer, Mayor and Commissioner. So back in October of 2024, this was declared a dangerous building. We have gone through all of the due process steps up to this point to work with the property owner. We cited two findings, one being a chimney that was progressively leaning, which they removed relatively promptly. And there was the second matter of the uncontrolled drainage off the back of the building, which was damaging not only this property, but also a city-owned property to the north. And by going through this process, this gives us the authority to go in to make alterations to the property, to make it safe, basically, to where it's not damaging other properties. And the process would then be, once we've done this, yes, we would go ahead and put a lien on the property. The property owner would have the opportunity to buy out that lien. Would have, then the process would be to go to foreclosure to recoup those costs. And again, the property owner would have the opportunity again for a legal hearing and will have many opportunities to work this out, so.
I guess, yeah, I mean, my, obviously, my first thought was we're constantly told that we can't do anything on someone else's property. And so I guess this is part of the legal process of.
We did go through the dangerous building order.
Process, yes. Yep.
Any other questions?
This is being funded through general funds?
Yes.
That being said, would they consider just granting the city an easement versus leaning the property? Well, and I guess the reason I'm asking this, has there been anything regarding the title search on this property as to what lien?
Yeah. There aren't any. There was a property tax for the year, which presumably has been paid. They were current otherwise. So there are no outstanding liens on this property currently.
So you're saying they were arrears in their property tax at one time?
Just, it was due, they hadn't paid it yet. It wasn't past due.
Okay. I don't know, I guess I'm looking at it from the standpoint of it looks like we're gambling that we're going to own another piece of property versus just asking the owners to grant this easement across their property for our drainage.
Well, we still have to do the drainage, though that's still going to cost.
And it's not our drainage. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But it's the falling off of their building and ending up in our basement.
So the Coors Building, that drainage, we're still looking at addressing through some kind of an easement with Wally Shark then?
That's correct. And I've already spoken with Mr. Shark about that.
So does anti-donation not apply because of the dangerous building?
Yes, because we're going to put a lien on it.
So the existing property owners are okay with this?
The existing property owners.
Yeah, the 220.
Have told us that they cannot afford or will not, are not willing to. We met with them twice and attempted a third time and to talk through, you know, and explain what needs to, exactly needs to happen. And they have been unwilling to cooperate.
So this is not a friendly resolution then?
That's correct.
Any other comments?
I would just note that the city is in the process of putting a considerable amount of money into the Coors Building, resolved some drainage issues of our own on that building. And those fixes have been implemented as far as controlling the storm drainage goes. And everything's worked, functioning properly. We got some good rain over the weekend and it handled it pretty well, aside from at the, would it be the southwest corner, where we have some moisture still coming in as a result of this not being resolved.
You ready?
I will make a motion to award the quote for the storm drainage and dangerous premises located at 220 South First Street to Gonzalez Contractors LLC.
Motion of second to award the contract to Gonzalez Contractors LLC for $9,743.25. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And a, one, please mark one opposed. All righty, item H, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line upfront, the city was paid a visit last week by members of Senator Heinrich's staff, the third visit in three months. They have expressed a lot of interest in collaborating with the city on the Film School, I-27 Infrastructure and Education. Big Rocks with the Treasurer has met with City Hall leadership to go over the nearly $17 million in grants. We're bandwidth managing those grants. The police has noted they have three officers at the academy but are still doing active recruiting in anticipation of future turnover. With the Fire Department, I hope you got to see the new ambulance parked outside. And we are already in the process of ordering the next one, which could take up to three years. Public Works, the Director of Public Works and I were reviewing engineering plans today in anticipation of the pickleball project going out for bid. With engineering, we had had new workstations put in place here in City Hall to ensure we have enough computers for each worker. Facilities, we are working on some settling issues on the police side of City Hall. And we're hoping to have these issues addressed before they impact any dispatch equipment. The clerk, there's still a few pictures for our website to be scheduled. Desiree will contact you. Commissioner Chatterley, yours were the only one that came out good, so.
I believe that.
I want to redo.
No, yours were the only ones that came out good. So the cities will be issuing building permits, economic development. The city will be, the city issued the building permit for the Maverick Gas Station and we will have a construction schedule as soon as they provide it to us. Mentioned in dispatches, this week goes to the Wild West History Association, who completed. Mentioned in dispatches, this week goes to the Wild West History Association, who completed the installation of a grave marker for Fred Stewart, alias John Wallace Green, in Raton, New Mexico. Stewart was co-leader with Pat Garrett of the posse that captured Billy the Kid and a small group of cohorts at Stinking Springs east of Fort Sumner on December twenty-third, eighteen eighty. And finally, some closing thoughts. Last week, I traveled to San Luis for family matters on the Amtrak, as across the country I saw both abandoned train stations and beautiful stations that were really centers of their communities. I did some research, and Amtrak is sponsoring its Great American Stations Program. A train station often paints the first impression of a town or city for visitors coming for a long stay or simply passing through. It could be a transportation hub for commuters, a place for a community to gather, and an opportunity to spur economic growth. Stations have always been the hub of civic activities and social centers, and investing in the train station can add a lot to our little town. So I will be exploring these options in the near future, but ask the commission to consider to raise the city higher on our city priorities.
All righty, thank you. Yeah, the train station's been on there for a while. Kind of get some work done on that thing.
That will work on the train.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Honeyfield, Mrs. Giacomo, Mayor Pro Tim.
Nope.
None here. This meeting is adjourned.